I was just going to. They were.
We'll start with the first thing.
All good. I got that yours.
Well. And that was started at the end.
Well, we. We're all set.
Yeah.
January twenty second, two thousand twenty five, seven oh three P M. Call the planning board, be to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance. A good example of betterment to the extent on nation. In this book, justice for all. It's time of January's moment. It was a continuation of the public hearing for Luzern Woods. If someone would like to make any comments, you need to come to the podium. And speaking to the microphone, make sure you give your name and address. And I believe maybe there's a time limit. No address, just name. Okay, sorry. Just name and they will be taking the time. Up to you.
I need giving the amount of audience numbers plus the on the Zoom read.
Does everybody agree? Thirty-five minutes in here. This will be two, three. Okay, so anybody that could come to the podium, we'll do that first before we do Zoom.
I'm Denise Allen. The last time I was here, I wasn't prepared to speak, but my emotions got the better of me. I asked the residents, I'm sorry, I asked why the residents, both seasonal and local, have not gotten letters to them to know of this huge development. I never received a reply and still no letters have gone out. The rule of the two hundred feet circle doesn't apply here. All taxpayers should get a letter advising them of this outlandish development, which would raise their taxes, increase demands of the fire department in town. The town would have to provide more workers for garbage pickup, beach details, et cetera. I do see a sign out there occasionally that said they're looking for employees. You say it will increase the school population. Have you looked at the school report card? Don't you think that's the reason why so many have moved away? Luzern School, the school is not Shenandoah Queensberry District. They will never be in that level of achievement. People who will always require those districts and any other schools south of here. I have never heard of anyone asking for Luzern School, no disrespect to the school itself. The majority of homes in this area is not near the five hundred K mark. Yet some are more, but if you count the ones below, you will have the majority. If someone wants to purchase a five hundred thousand dollar home, they usually ask for a different area unless they want waterfront. You said that the people would be able to ride golf carts and A T Vs in the streets. Then that was quickly changed when someone said it was illegal. There are young kids walking in the streets and their parents trailing behind or riding bikes. The Heights has always been an area where people can do this. For thirty-six years, I wish I had a penny for every person that walked past my house with a dog, a kid, or themselves. Lastly, have you hired? I'm sorry, you have. Um, this money-making development will only benefit the developer. It should be somewhere else and not in our serene town. I only did three minutes. I didn't know I had five. Thank you.
That's only two minutes.
Ah, I wish.
That seems.
My name's Eileen Winslow. I'm here on behalf of Joan Morales because she's traveling today. So she asked me to read her, her statement for her. And I have copies for each of you, too. At the last meeting of this board, Eric Moses' representative posited support for the Luzern Woods development based on several different quote-unquote facts as they were presented. This statement is in response to several of those quote-unquote facts, as well as to acknowledge a not-so-friendly comment regarding initial conception of this project. First of all, let's remember what we're looking at. A real estate investor whose one and only interest is to make a profit here, then move on. The quote-unquote charming community of Lake Luzern, as described on the town website, has much to lose should Moses prevail. Let's look at some of the arguments made previously. It is true that residential development already exists near the main source of the town's water. But consider this, construction was before we understood that clean water and well-balanced ecosystems are not a given. The old adage, just because it's been done before, done before, doesn't make it right, should be considered. In fact, the developers' argument supports not moving forward because the development will add at a minimum thirty-six more potential stressors to the ecosystem and aquifer. Now let's turn to the economic arguments touted last month. Affordable housing. A half million dollar-plus mortgage in this community and the accompanying taxes doesn't qualify as affordable on its face. Adding to the tax base, surely it will be a nice drop in the proverbial bucket, but consider this. The increased cost to the town for maintaining the infrastructure demanded by the project could eat up any added tax revenue. Adding a dozen or more, dozen or so students to the local school system, thus shoring up a district that has seen a large decrease in attendance. A humbug, loss of population is not a community-wide problem. It is a statewide problem and has been one for many years and for many reasons. Anyone who watches television knows, knows this. Now, to address what I mentioned previously as a not-so-nice comment made last month, the representative stated, we could have added up to sixty lots. This statement was more like a veiled threat. Be happy, people. It could have been worse. Trust me, the town's well-being was not what the developer had, developer had in mind when the number of houses was determined. We can infer, however, what we can infer, however, is that the cost of seeking a larger development must have been prohibitive. This project should not be approved. The arguments presented by profit-seeking investors do not, in my opinion, hold water. The town aquifer, on the other hand, does hold water and we need to, need to protect it at all costs. To quote another old adage, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound, is worth a pound of cure. And there's just a little bit more. I'll get copies to you. Thank you.
My name is Ann Cobell. Um, I wasn't here for the last meeting, so excuse me if I repeat anything. And I won't take more than a couple of minutes. Um, I'm concerned about the water. Uh, the proposed development's proximity to the town's aquifer, a critical source of drinking water for us all, is a primary concern. The addition of eighteen new septic systems in close proximity to the aquifer raises valid questions about the potential contamination of our water supply. And while the developer has indicated that the Department of Health will review the septic system plans, merging the planning board to require a more detailed environmental impact study, specifically addressing the risks to the water quality and any mitigating um measures that will be implemented to pretend or to protect our aquifer. And um, I'm hoping that the planning board will, will really spend time doing an, uh, getting an environmental impact study done. Besides the one that's coming from the developer who has an interest in moving forward. Thanks.
So. Sorry.
Um. Catherine Bahalski McGlaga, you heard me at the last committee, committee meeting.
Can you speak closer to them?
Okay. Normally, my husband complains I talk too loud, so. I'm not going to go over what we, what I discussed the last time because that's beating a dead horse. But I forgot to add, along with these gorgeous lawns reaching into the aquifer, what about Lake Luzern and the runoff? Do we need that extra pesticides and one fertilizer with the nitrogen getting down into the lake? That's an issue. And when Mr. Engineer there stated about, well, the aquifer is so large. Yeah, but everything's coming down. Where are our wells? And why don't we contaminate the aquifer, the rest of the people who rely on that aquifer, who do not live in Luzern? And again, I reiterate, a five hundred thousand dollar house, people here cannot afford, and neither their families. And I can't see anyone buying a house here. I just see it as it's going to be short-term rentals. Now, when I left last week, Mr. Engineer and whomever was with him, maybe it was Mr. Moses himself, I mentioned about this short-term rental. And they didn't say to me in the parking lot, oh, no, those are going to be families that will increase the enrollment at the school. You know what they said to me? Well, they have regulations for short-term rentals. So you can see that however they're going to make the money, a family or somebody's going to invest to rent it out. They're going to do whatever they's going to fill their pockets. Now, you can say that'll bring business to town. I spoke to someone who, a proprietor of one of the places, you know what she said? She said the short-term rentals, they don't bring any money to town because they have kitchens, they cook. They don't go and eat out. And also, I have friends who use short-term rentals. They don't shop. They're not going to go to Luzern Market. They bring their own stuff because they get it by bulk at Costco. And I have friends who've gone to short-term rentals in Massachusetts, and they bring all their own supplies. So I don't see this benefiting the town. And what was brought up about the increase on the departments that function in this town, it's, it's not going to equal the taxes. It's going to be more. So I can see the board and you're all thinking, oh, this is going to bring taxes into town. I, I think it's not going to be beneficial. And again, the aquifer, the Lake Luzern.
Time's up.
This stuff's going to just seep on down. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Nicole Mots. Um, I'm a resident of Lake Luzern. Um, I attended the Lake George Summit uh, last year, and I was able to meet a lot of people that are very involved in Lake George, uh, the health of the lake, um, from various angles. And I think a wonderful resource for all of you guys is to reach out to Chris Navitsky. Do you guys know who he is? So he's the Lake George Waterkeeper. Um, and he's been working with Lake George for the last twenty years. Um, uh, doing a, a major program there. And what Chris does is his program applies research, science, and engineering principles for water quality protection through the initiatives such as the low-impact development around Lake George, sustainable winter management, algae biomonitoring, and septic system management. Um, and so he has a lot of um uh, awards and research and a lot of education. Um, and any of us, if we're having issues with our septic, or if we think we might be having issues with our septic, or we have an old septic, um, he, free of charge, he gets paid by the state and some other um agencies. And he's not a whistleblower. You have a, if you have a bad septic and you can't afford to upgrade it, he will give you advice and he'll help you get funding. If you still can't upgrade it for whatever reason, he's not going to blow the whistle. He's a, he's a, a person that's on the side of all the residents, just trying to improve the quality of septic and our aquifers uh, and the quality of the waters in and around Lake George and outside of Lake George, too. So I would just implore you that perhaps you should write his name down. Um, Chris Navitsky, N A V I T S K Y. Um, and look him up. He's on, he's on, you can Google him and you can get his information and his phone number. Thank you.
Is there any more listeners? Okay, at our last meeting at the end, everyone who would like to speak on Zoom, it was two. And make their phones visible. So if somebody would like to speak off of Zoom, we need you to.
Three. First one. Claudia Bramer.
Would you, would you connect to Claudia? Okay, Claudia, do you have some?
I can, I can unmute myself. Thank you. Is it okay? Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate it. Sorry. I'm Claudia Bramer, uh, executive director with Protect the Adirondacks. I've sent you a couple of letters. Uh, we also sent you a copy of our letter to the Adirondack Park Agency regarding the wetlands on the project site. And I wanted to reiterate our concerns about the natural resources on the lots being subdivided. I think that that's pretty well laid out in our letters, as well as in the applicant's own environmental assessment form, part one, discussing some of the different aspects that will be impacted by the subdivision. Um, and we do encourage you to go forward with a positive declaration and do that full environmental impact statement to really study all of the impacts. Um, the other thing I want to bring up tonight is about protecting the shoreline. It, you know, we're urging the planning board to take a look at and consider the impacts of the beach access lot and to protect against those impacts that are going to result from the use of the lot by who, people who will be residing in the subdivision lots. And also, like was just mentioned, are there going to be people there using the beach, beach access lot who are actually tenants um, or short-term renters? And we think that that has a whole nother aspect of impacts that you should be considering. Um, and one of the things you could do is perhaps put on a condition or a caveat saying that this is only available, these subdivision lots can only be available to owners or long-term tenants. Um, and I want to point you to, and, and your counsel to section four point six zero of the town's regular subdivision law, not the conservation design law, but um, the subdivision law discussing the recreational considerations that the planning board has to take into account when reviewing new proposed subdivision plots. And I think that gives you some guidance and some uh teeth around um protecting that beach access lot, because I know there's been some questions there. So again, we would just ask you to really take a look at that and make sure that there aren't shoreline impacts. There's not going to be water erosion. There aren't going to be people leaving trash and septic problems behind at the beach. So um, thank you very much for that. And I, I ask that you keep the public hearing open for this additional consideration. Thank you. I'm sorry about my dog.
Sorry, a little bit of dog.
You there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Carla Bitner. I'm an attorney at Bartlett, Pontiff, Stewart, and Rose in Glen's Falls. And I'm here on behalf of Art Havikhorst, uh, who has asked me to speak on his behalf. Uh, I spoke at the very first public hearing on this, and I submitted a letter dated November twentieth, twenty twenty-four with a host of questions, uh, fifteen questions that I had requested be sent to the town engineer uh, to look at for these. A lot of these questions have already been discussed from other residents, including the concerns with the aquifer, the concerns with the septic system, things of that nature. A couple of the questions have not been uh, either sent to the town-designated engineer um, or were not reviewed by the town-designated engineer. Um, I was able to obtain a copy of the town-designated engineer's report, um, which I believe was sent last Friday. I'm not sure if the planning board actually has an opportunity to review it, or if the applicant has. Um, but I think that there needs to be a little bit more, um, a little bit more meat put into that. Specifically with respect to um Camp Tech Road, the applicant's uh engineer has specifically said these lots have nothing to do with Camp Tech Road. My client uh lives on Camp Tech Road. He has access to the beach. He has an easement over this road. The road is owned by Mr. Moses, and there is a lot of issues with the road. The concern is that it will be encumbered by at least eighteen more homes, which includes short-term rentals. So there is a concern about that. He has indicated that it's not part of this. I would like that on the record that it's not part of this. If it is part of this, there needs to be a discussion about that, and there needs to be discussion in the deeds. I would request the planning board attorney review any and all deed restrictions that are put in here. Um, and in addition, there still seems to be discussion about whether there's a water district to be filed. As far as I know, D O H has not had a realty subdivision application put into it yet. Uh, there's just a lot of conditions that would need to be put on this. The fact that the engineering report came out Friday, I'm not sure if after the long weekend, the planning board has reviewed it. I would request that the, the planning board really take into account the concerns here. Um, the issues that have been raised, that will be raised, and keep the public hearing open so that the act, the record can be really fleshed out and all questions answered. Thank you.
Um, is it all right if I speak now? Okay, um, my name is Moon Title. I'm from Twenty Ivy Lane, and I don't have much new to add from last time I was here last month and also from all of the comments, but I just wanted to, to raise my voice along with everyone else, um, which is what I know is ecosystems and, and water quality. And because, I just want to repeat again, because we have an unconfined aquifer, we need to be especially careful. And I want to echo someone else mentioned, um, you know, like the, the logic that's often used is because we've had other development in the past, we need to allow development in the present and the future. And I think we've been lucky that our aquifer has done well so far, and I think we should really, really take care of it and slow down this process and go through a proper environmental impact statement and really look at the potential um impact on our water system. I went and kind of drove around the area, walked around the area, and also, you know, followed it to the aquifer and, and where it comes up for our town drinking water supply. And, and I am quite concerned, and I'm also concerned about the impacts of the water quality on Lake Luzern. Um, I live on Fourth Lake, and um, our lake, we're at the highest end of moderate with phosphorus, which is very concerning because when that becomes higher is when algal blooms come in. And the more landscaping chemicals and fertilizers that you come in raise phosphorus in the lake. And it's something that should be taken into consideration in planning a new development around a lake. Yes, we have a housing crisis, and that does need to be addressed. There are also areas of the ecosystem that are more sensitive than others. And as people have mentioned, five hundred thousand dollar homes is unlikely to solve the housing crisis. So there may need to be development in other areas. We're living in times where there are competing interests and needs in all things, and um, our water quality is essential for drinking water. And one of the amazing things about our area is the recreation of the incredible water bodies that we all live near, and I urge you to take that into consideration. And perhaps as a town, we can find other ways to address a housing crisis that will not put our drinking water and our recreational waters at risk. Thank you.
Uh, yes, go ahead. Glad to.
This is Karen, the zoning officer. I checked my email before the meeting. I had one email in there that asked to have this read at the meeting. Um, so here we go. Dear members of the planning board, my name is Diane Core Corin, and we are owners of eighty-five Sagamore Drive since two thousand and three. I wanted to speak live at this meeting, but I am responsible for leading a team of volunteers that provides and serves a monthly dinner and, and V F W meeting for local veterans of our community, and it is from five to eight this evening. I have been viewing and following the development of the Lake Luzern Woods project since last summer. Like many in our community, I am not opposed to change and improvements in this beautiful community, but share concerns about a project of this scope and some of the unanswered or not clearly defined concerns many others have expressed. I have two points I would like to share and speak on behalf of many that have these same concerns. Please note, my property does not have deeded rights to use the beach at Camp Tech Road. I do understand that the private Camp Tech Beach is not to be considered from a legal perspective when deciding on the validity of this development. However, we have not seen that properties being proposed in this development will indeed not have rights to use this private beach. It has gone back and forth, and usually the discussion is halted as it is considered a separate issue. But to date, no one has defined in writing that it is separate and that these properties will never have rights to that beach. I would like to request the developer be transparent and definitively demonstrate these properties will not have privileges of any sort to use that beach as it, as it not supervised in any way. Without that promise from the developer and upfront communication to potential property owners, it is reasonable to assume that there will be added use to that beach. This is, of course, concern to all of us, especially in its current condition with no official commitment from its owner to improve it at this point. This most certainly will impact the town. Erosion is already increasing each season into the lakes since removal of the, most of the trees and scrub at least five years ago. There is no public bathroom and the distance these proposed homes to this beach is quite far and may potentially encourage using the lake instead of going home. The access to the beach i- is on a road that has now become filled in, filled with an uneven surface and large runoff trenches that make accessibility challenging, challenging and dangerous. With each rainstorm, this only increases. There also has not been clarity on the initial idea of potential owners having access to trails, be it for golf court, carts, or other vehicles. This would be another relief to all concerned if the developer would be transparent about the use of their proposed trails. Put it in writing, they are for walkers slash bicycles only. Although this beach cannot be considered legally, please extend beyond that in your consideration. I trust you all to understand the downstream direct implications on how behavior and the use of this land and lake may impact the community. I am sure we will all agree that the lake is one of the most important environmental and financial assets to the town. My second concern is the credibility of the developer. This is the largest development project being proposed ever in this community, and transparency, transparency, honesty, and experience is key. For all we hope this development may be for Lake Luzern, it must be done correctly to achieve the necessary short and long-term successes. One partner in this development group is a member of our community and in fact owns Camp Tech Road and the chair's private beach, where many other longstanding families have lifetime deeded rights to access this beach and its waters to bathe in the lake. In the seven or so years this beach has been owned by the developer, it has become inaccessible, except for a path that I believe is on property, not even owned by him. It has been stripped of all of its trees and scrub that helped maintain it from erosion. It has a chain-linked fence over a dangerous broken wall in need of repair and a boarded-up boar, boathouse. In short, it has become an eyesore on one of the most pristine areas of the lake. He has had the opportunity to partner with his neighbors and to demonstrate his commitment to this community owning this very important lakefront treasure, yet we have seen no improvements beyond removal of many old unused boats and new racks for storage. Lake Luzern deserves a developer who is committed to community and advancement of the town for the greater good and not just self-serving profit. With a project of this scope never managed by the town, this is even more imperative. There was opportunity for him There was opportunity for him to build that credibility and trust. In fact, the. And in fact, the opposite is evident if you take a ride over and witness the deterioration in person. Keep in mind, there will always be opportunities that will present themselves if in fact their experience and references. Do not align with what is needed. Lake Luzern is a charming community with an extremely gifted. Okay, time is up. I will provide this to you by email. I, and again, I just received it before the meeting and didn't have time to disperse it and then my printer jammed, so I couldn't give it to you tonight. I will, there, there wasn't much left. I will provide it to you tomorrow by email.
Good evening, Brandon Ferguson from Environmental Design Partnership. Representing the applicant Luzern Wood LLC. I know we've kind of come up here then the last couple of public hearings as well, um, and kind of given some information to the board. I'm just listening to the comments tonight, a few things to kind of quickly cover. ATV golf carts. I know that was part of initial discussion we've had with the board and preliminary stuff. Where we decided to make those pedestrian and bicycle pass. As far as, you know, the sixty lots, you know, I was kind of just. That last meeting, that was an example of comparing it to the density of what's in the surrounding era, area. It wasn't meant as a threat of any kind to, to go with sixty lots. You know, we have the project we have because we think it's the best use of the property. The short term rentals, there are short term rental laws and, um, in the town that only allows so many short term rentals. That was kind of the point on that. These are going to be marketed as for sale lots and for sale homes. But there are also the, the, there are local protections against too many short term rentals in town. The wetlands, I hope you guys all got, we just got it the other day finally, been waiting for it for a while from Army Corps of Engineers. They did give us a letter, um, essentially stating that the, um, small wetland pockets onsite are non-jurisdictional and don't require any permitting. And DOH subdivision application has been in for a little while, DOH, they are kind of slow. I've reached out to them a couple of times. They say they're, they're reviewing stuff now, but we haven't, um, gotten any comments from them yet. I know they were part of the seeker reach out as well, um, when, um, you guys put that out as a board. And a lot of the comments we're hearing are kind of repeat comments the last couple of months. I'd like to request that the board close the public hearing, um, maybe allow us to have more of a discussion with the board. About any issues that they see, um, with what the public's brought up or with our plans, um, so that we can kind of, uh, move forward here. I know we got the letter from the town engineer, just got that, I think this morning. I know Karen was out for a couple of days. Um, I read through it and there was nothing that really surprised me. It was too concerning in there. You know, there's all stuff that can be, um, we think we easily addressed, um, we can respond to and, um, turn stuff back around to them. For any additional review. Yeah, that's all stuff that can be addressed pretty easily by our office with minimal changes to the plans. At that, I know, um, you know, like I said, we request that you close public hearing and start the seeker process. Well, that's it. Thank you, guys.
Can I ask a question?
Can you ask Kim a question? And I know you made mention of some of the items that. Were previously discussed and at this point, I think, um, a lot of us are still looking for some of the answers to those questions. Appreciate the effort that you're making and know that the applicant has a big investment in this. And the town needs the right kind of development and yet there are still questions that need to be answered. As you know, the planning board just received yesterday, the town engineer's report from Cedarwood. Can you tell us, was the information drawn from results in the ADP Engineering? Engineering report or did Cedarwood perform their own engineering study onsite at the property?
Um, I, I can't speak for Cedarwood. I don't know what their process was for doing their engineering review. We provided the application to the town and then the town provided to Cedarwood.
Okay, so, so we don't know yet at this point if Cedarwood did an onsite study. Another question that I have is. Would the applicant intend on placing any further restrictions, uh, on commercial use of these homes? Yes, the town has short term rental agreements, but it's a major concern because just right now after two years. The community of Lake Luzern is seeing some of the results of short term rental. The short term rental law that's been in effect. And transient owners have already changed the character of the neighborhood and the heights. So for example, will there, could there be restrictions that could be incorporated into the, uh. To the deeds that say, for example, would restrict certain rules or timeframes of these homes.
I, I have talked to applicants about that and I guess we town council as well, see what's legal within that case. I'm not, not attorney, I'm just the engineer. But that would be something we could definitely have a discussion with the applicants about and see what they'd be willing to do and, and with their attorney and the town attorney and see what would be. Legal as well for that type of situation. There's definitely a discussion we'd be willing to have.
Do you want to have a, in the board, you have any questions or just?
So if any member has, sees the applicant representing have any questions. I mean, I, I have to say, I don't think we can close the public hearing. There's still too much out there. We're waiting on DOH, we're waiting on a lot of things that we.
And DOH approval has to come for the subdivision, right? They have to approve the subdivision for it to move forward. Um, and a lot of towns we work with, you're not going to get DOH approval until after the town approves it. Town has to do seeker first. Before we can even get close to getting DOH approval for this project. So there is kind of the, the, the horse before the cart thing there. And you know, a lot of times, and when I asking necessarily for an approval of the project tonight, you know, I'd like to open more of a dialogue with the board. I know this is a lot of. Public comments. Um, our opinion is that, or thoughts are that a lot of the comments have been expressed to the board. I haven't really heard a lot of new comments tonight. It's a lot of the same concerns. And we like to open up and kind of have a more of a conversation with this board about those concerns. And what you see, um, as well as review of the town engineer comments. As well and their, and their analysis of our full environmental assessment form.
I do just want to clarify for the board, you're not going to have DOH approval when you do the preliminary plat. You need it for the final plat review. So you probably won't have that before you make this decision. You'll have it before you make the final decision.
Yeah, I think before DOH move on anything, that seeker's got to be completed.
Suggesting you close it.
I know there was several, there was another subdivision from years ago, they, they kept it open because they didn't have DOH approval.
They will not approve the subdivision until the town has done seeker. That's one of their checklist items that has to be submitted to them, uh, prior to them approving any project. Uh, the board is the lead agency.
Well, we can go through the paperwork tonight. There's lots of stuff we have to do, correct? If you look on that.
There are a lot of concerns from the town or from the, from the community that like we're not responding directly to any of these public comments, but like.
No, we're just asking a question.
I meant, we just kind of have to sit here and listen to everybody. We're not. We're not allowed to have a, a direct dialogue back and forth with everybody that comes up to discuss. I know that there's been some concerns about. You guys come up and, and, and give us your opinions. We're listening to all of that. But we're not allowed to enter a dialogue with you during that period. So that's just kind of part of this process.
Definitely just talk to the applicant, uh, rules and regulations set up by the town, state, the county, everything, you know. Make sure it's being done correctly and right before we can approve anything, but. Going to the rules, as far as the public hearing, we, we respond to the applicant as far as, correct? Okay, just so that the audience understands that. Okay, is that what you wanted to make clear?
The two mics next to Mr. Karamski, um, those don't work. So if you guys want to speak.
Was it just silent for a second? Okay, apologies.
Just if you want to borrow Francis's. And the same goes for Pam.
Okay, is, is that it?
Um, yeah, I mean, so we, you know, I'm just kind of looking through what else we've received, um, as well. I think recently we also got a letter from the, um. Warren County Municipal Superior Prevention and Building Code. They looked at some of the, um, stuff with the proposed roadway and they seem to be in, um. General agreement with, um, granting, um, some of the minor exceptions to, um, some of the typical rules as far as, um, grade and, um, length of the road. So we did get that letter as well. I'm sure the board was, um, given that, so. Other than that, I think that's it. So, thank you.
Starts coming over tonight for that. Next month if you want to move in, the public can move. And then the agenda can, if we have a meeting next month, but.
Not supposed to ask questions, but I, I don't know what it is, your question.
Oh, I just want to know, I know it's residential hamlet, so it's. Residential, um, zone. But because of the proximity to Lake Luzern. Is, does the Adirondack Park Agency get involved? Do they need to be notified or permit submitted to them?
The Adirondack Park has been. Reach, has been involved in this right from the beginning. The, we have gotten multiple letters from them. Every time there's a change, the applicant has resubmitted to them. And each time it has come back as non-jurisdictional to the Adirondack Park Agency, but they are certainly aware of it. And again, every time, I, I don't know, you've done two or three submissions to them, I believe, and each time it has come back as. Well, it's, it's not that it's residential hamlet or anything, it's just that. The things that they look at, they have no concerns about.
Okay, so the first thing on our agenda for the subdivision is the. Secret Plan Board declared themselves an elite, elite agency. Got the jurisdiction or whatever. Anybody see that? It's on my plan, which is included in the application. Cedarwood. Karen, would he be here tonight?
No, he's not here tonight. If you feel you need him, we can have him come to the next meeting.
Should to, um, could you hear next month?
At our next meeting.
Uh, Karen, I, can, can I ask a question? I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but, um. I, I just heard the engineer asked to close the public participation in this process. And I just want to say that, that makes me feel really concerned.
All right, motion to have the town engineer come to the next meeting. All in favor? And opposed, motion.
It keeps going back to mute.
Just so everyone knows, it's on Zoom. And there are no comments tonight. Hearing, so.
Hope the public hearing remains open.
Still remains open. Soon as we're gonna have a meeting next month, since we've lasted time with you here to come. So if you have comments, you'll have to wait till next week. We're done with public comments for tonight. We're done with public comments. We've already made that statement. Ask questions. You can only make comments. We don't take questions of the board. That's what I just told everybody. Clear that we don't take questions from the public. When we address the applicant, that's the way the planning board works. You guys get to comment. We take your comments into consideration. We follow those regulations of the town, of state or county, whatever. Make our decision, but. According to the regulations, the only time you can comment is at the public hearing, but you're not allowed to ask the planning board questions and we're. We want to understand and allow them to answer any questions, correct, Mary?
I mean, it's not a matter of allowed or not allowed. It's just a. Public hearing is for the board to listen to your comments or take them into consideration when they make their decisions.
Yeah, but the question I have that I heard tonight that I thought was a valid point. Was, are they going to get use of the private lot that we've told for the beach? That is not involved in this. That is a question that all of a sudden, if they turn around and give them the rights afterwards, it's something that I would like to know personally. To see, you can't turn around and say offer that, no, you can't use the lake and then all of a sudden, once it's approved, give them rights to lake because then there's got to be. Things done to the lake to make it more available to everyone, just to be fair. So I'm just wondering, can they do that?
So I sent you all that email with the list of criteria that you're supposed to consider.
Okay.
So if you can fit it into one of those criteria, you should do that.
Okay, that's all what I want.
And not, then it's not appropriate for you to consider.
Okay.
So, secret till next. That's fine. I, I would like to have a lawyer too, in case. I'm sorry, I have some questions still after reading his report. So.
Well, if we're going to have him come to the next meeting, I would suggest that each of you. Look at his report in addition to the seeker response that he did. And make a list from all the comments that you've heard and, and things that you want, would like addressed.
Okay.
And bring them to the board next time while the town engineer is here and between. The applicant and the engineer, we, you should be able to get most of your questions and concerns addressed in some form. Or at least give them a chance to address them in the future.
If I'm not going to be here next month because I'm going to be away, I won't get it to Tony and let Tony.
No, you have to be here. You have a lot of questions to any of us. We'll let those get them answered later. So, I also think we're done, I suppose.
Yes, yes.
Anyone doing for the court, train store subdivision?
I can call the, the applicant if you want. Let me, let me call and see if I can get hold of them.
I don't know.
Who said he was gonna be here?
John, before I call this person. He took an authorization form giving Kristen Dara permission to act as his agent. They're not here. Would you, do you want me to approach it that? You would like to put it off until someone is here that can answer questions?
So we can tell them to next month.
Is that your intention?
Since we don't have anybody here to represent, um. Direct program to next month when we have representation.
Let me reach him and see what he says, if I can get them. Dustin, this is Karen from the.
Yeah.
Uh zoning office. We're here at the, we're here at the planning board meeting, and no one from Dara surveying showed up to do your subdivision. Um, so. I, I'm, I don't know what you want us to do. Do you want us to wait a month and ha, so that someone is here to represent you? I don't either. If you can get on through Zoom, you've um. Uh, I don't have my, I don't have like the Zoom number you'd have to. Go on the town website, and it's on our town website somewhere, how to access Zoom. It's town of, town of Lake Luzerne dot.
Oh, thank you.
John, make sure I get one of those.
Sorry, your name's not on here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure where on the website it is, but somewhere on that website, it should tell you how to access Zoom, and there's a part, you know, like a. Once you go to Zoom.
It's on the homepage.
No, uh, no, don't go to any department. It should be somewhere on the.
On the scroll down.
Yeah, it's way down near the bottom on the, on the.
Right.
It's all right.
Yeah.
That's it. That will be the strong channels back.
Why, why would you want to call it?
Okay, we have the Zoom code for you. Hold on. Can you write it down?
All right, good to know, good to know.
Yes, yes. All right, ready? Nine oh two. Six, eight, seven. Nine, seven, six, four.
Oh, okay.
I know a bunch of maniacs.
You might be done, we'll show it online.
Uh, you should, it should bring you right up to our um meeting, I think, town.
Make them online.
I think. He's getting.
I loved it. I love those two. Yeah. He plays paddle.
He's joining.
And he's a. He's, yeah, he's a love. He's just this.
Yes, that's it.
You're here. All right, I'm gonna hang up, all right? All right, bye. We're gonna try and proceed.
Is his name? Dustin? Dustin, I need one. Okay.
Subdivision. Is it in the definition? Yeah, but then it says if there's an easement, the lightest way goes larger.
Is that in the definition?
So.
Something on existing.
Question, is it a ma, major with this, Karen? Because uh, I guess there's some kind of a.
Right, so.
Yeah. Cross it out. Well, only because. She'll explain it to us.
For easement. All right.
And Dustin's with his name. Yeah, worlds, Dustin.
Yep, can you hear me? Awesome. Sorry about this.
That's all right. This is in the RT zone. Is everybody listening?
Yes.
Dustin, um.
We're, we're starting the Kane Storpe subdivision. This is in the RT zone, which requires one acre with a minimum width of two hundred feet. Um. It's presently two lots that they want to. Reconfigure into four when they're done. And, and um you have to determine if it's a major or a minor subdivision. And then. All the rest of the paperwork, I believe, is here. To get the easement, they're gonna have to give an easement. Down this last lot.
That sounds like it would be considered below the lots if this subdivision were to happen.
Yes. We're, we're just doing a bit of research for a second here.
I could speak to the um, the right of way as far as the.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say on the lot, uh, I don't know if you're looking at what we're proposing with the, the four, or if you're looking at the original older survey that shows just the two. And I can't remember what the name of the second uh parcel that has a long right of way, so we're gonna use that pre-existing. Right of way, so that all, all four lots, that would use that same right of way.
It's just called a major, and they have to have a public hearing, basically, is the difference. Okay.
And then, now it's gonna be the real subdivision.
Right. That's why.
Well, it shouldn't be a minor subdivision or it's major.
It's because of the road.
What would that be?
Because of the road.
You need to create an easement of access, which makes it a major subdivision. It's on page sixteen of your regulations, if you want.
Dustin, because we have a easement access, it's turned into a major subdivision instead of a minor, according to our regulations.
I was under the impression that if it was four lots or less, it's considered a minor subdivision.
There's no rule.
Yeah, if you, if all of those parcels can access, be accessed through the main road that's already there, it would keep it as a minor, but because you have to create that easement, or even if it's created, if they're using the easement, that kicks it into a major.
And so, since the two parcels, the way they are, the way it shows it, the one parcel, the first one that's closest to the street is on Call Street, so you're saying that it could access that road, correct?
Yes, but you would need each of the subdivision parcels to be able to access that road.
But as the property, then I would, then I guess I would say that right now, as it stands, it's a non-conforming situation, because that front parcel, there's, you can't access it from the road because of the bridge and the metal, um, what do you want to call it, uh? Like the highway guard and the grade of the road, like there's no way that you could access Call Street from that front lot. You'd have to use that right of way. Or use that long, thin stretch that that back parcel uses to access it, if that makes sense. There's a guardrail that you couldn't access that front parcel without using that same thing that's currently there, which is actually technically part of that other lot. Existing non-conformity.
But I think what, what. I'm saying is because of that, because of the easement and the regulations, it turns it into a major, unfortunately.
Well, the first lot, even though it may not. I don't know what your deed says about the first lot, whether there's an easement to it off that access road or not, but by creating these next two lots, you are creating a situation where they have to be accessed by an easement. Because they are not road frontage.
Okay. Okay.
Does this have to be resubmitted as a major, or?
So.
Oh.
Just gonna have to follow the major subdivision um procedure.
And so if I'm gonna follow the major subdivision procedure, then I might as well go ahead and try to create as many lots as possible, right? Because all the trouble to do that's gonna be the same regardless.
Well, keep in mind, if you create more lots, then you're gonna be subject to the Department of Health. So right now, you're not. You're not a realty subdivision, so you're not gonna have to go through the Department of Health. If you create more than you are going to.
So if I go five or more, you're saying the Department of Health gets triggered?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep.
Thank you for that info.
Do you want to proceed?
It still keeps it in the short form environmental, uh, it's still. I mean, it doesn't kick it to a type one, so really all you're looking at is a public hearing and then just a final plat, so it adds two steps.
Yeah, no, then that's the way we want to proceed that. Major subdivision.
They're home through buildings on any of these plots right now?
No, no.
No, they're all vacant.
First left to read, and so the record is short environmental assessment form.
Yes.
Yes. I don't, um, but hold, just give me one second. Cause you're gonna have to hold a public hearing.
Right.
So we're gonna wanna do that first, and then based on the comments, we'll do the short form.
Okay, so. First, okay. Set a public hearing for February twenty sixth to seventeen. For Dustin, the Kane Storpe applicant. I think Michael seconded.
All right, motion to set the public hearing for uh February twenty sixth. All in favor? Hang on a pose, motion carried.
Seven.
Seventeen. At that point, we'll read the short environmental form and continue on.
So that's gonna give you a month to, you know, have Kristen come. And we will review the envi, the environmental study at the next meeting, and we will. With major subdivisions, you have to have a public hearing, so that.
Okay.
That's will be happening, okay?
Yes.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
No worries.
Some. Change of dates for this year. This one, the proposal changes July. It's in July. July, no, it's been a long, the term was several concerts going on. Stairs. Um, some worst. Kind of our board participants. From that, it's, it's a volunteer thing, but. Um, we'd like to move the date of the July meeting from July twenty third, the fourth Wednesday, to July twenty second, the fourth Tuesday.
Can't do Tuesday.
Wait, the fourth Tuesday? Oh. No, I should be okay.
Yeah, you will. You only go the first and third.
Well, I, I have a different town on the second, but the fourth is fine.
Second change is November, close to Thanksgiving. Once again, start of the day for Thanksgiving on the twenty sixth, with the nineteenth of November. December, instead of December twenty fourth, December seventeenth. You can be here, but. Yes, it's still the twenty fourth. Final motion. Time seconds it.
To shift the July, November, and December meetings to July twenty second, November nineteenth, and December seventeenth. All in favor? Hang on a pose, motion carried.
December. Everybody had shoes to look at the minutes. World, we tell notes, thanks. So December eighteenth, two thousand twenty four.
So this one.
All right, motion to approve the December units. All in favor?
I don't know.
Hang on a pose. Motion carried.
Just, just a question. We went to training um last week. And, and one thing was brought up about alternates, that alternates are only supposed to sit on the board if there is a conflict of interest, and, or if the town makes a local law. So, is, does the town have a local law for that?
It's not a local law. I think it's just a resolution that's required.
Okay.
I think it says ordinance, local law, or resolution.
Okay, I, I don't know what stands, Pam, um, we just, since I've been here, that's the way it's been done. We can do some.
So, yeah.
We can research it, and if we need to take some action on it, we can get it in front of the board and certainly do that and clarify when an alternate should, should be served, or can be serving.
Yeah, cause that's what they had in the paperwork that they handed out, that the New York State statute allows for alternates to serve in conflicts of interest only. Or any other reason, like a quorum, lo, uh, local law or ordinance needed to supersede state law, so.
Yep.
We should really look into that. And do we have a vice chairperson? Mister Chairman?
That's what I know. I don't know what a vice chairperson is.
No, we're not required to, but just ask. No, we're not required to, but just asking. It was very interesting, there was a lot of questions and one uh. Um, there was pretty lengthy.
What did they say about a vice chairperson?
Just. Yeah, if no chairperson is appointed, then we could select a vice chairperson, but um.
We've done that before, if if we know.
I'm not gonna be here.
If we know you're not gonna be here, we've selected one ahead of time, and if you just weren't able to come to this meeting at the beginning of the meeting, you would select one at that point, that's what we've done in the past as well.
Yeah.
And special use permits, I mean, they just said that they're not easily denied, you must have documented for those. Um, for the public area.
And that's about.
And just that they don't need drop. Um, and that's about it, but yeah, it was was quite lengthy, but. That's Thursday. So we save for both and. It was a great turnout. Warren County people. Comments or anything or any trainings that you'd like to have? And, you know, New York State, they're very helpful, so.
That's good.
I don't have anything tonight, um, other than. The, again, the training Pam brought up, um, we have one coming up in February, which I've sent out notices on. I know that Barb is going to that one and. The other, most everybody else is has done the Warren County one that was just given right now, the people that I that still need training. It's gonna be John Karimsky, Tony Springer and Francis Martindale. And Josh is gonna need two more hours, he only took two hours. That's all I have.
I guess we're not gonna have a postal class for me.
I was hoping. Okay.
So. There was, just to remind me timeline lines, there was something about when we close the public hearing, it starts us.
You don't make a decision, then it's automatically approved.
I have a question. Is there any time that we can sit and sort through all these issues and do a little back and forth discussion before we?
No, all has to be open to the public.
You can hold a workshop if you feel one is necessary. But and it doesn't, even the public can attend, but you don't have to open up any to any public comments during that time.
But I would also suggest using the next meeting to do that with the engineer.
That's why the engineer here.
Yeah, I, you know, go through your minutes, go through what you've heard, make your own list to bring with you. To have questions so that you can get whatever you. Feel you want addressed. Answered.
And because I'm not gonna be here next one, unfortunately, I can't change it, cause I'm going to be at a real estate convention that I've already paid for. Um, there are two things that I really care about, one was if he's gonna open that up after the fact to let people use the beach. I want conditions put on that, that he's gotta clean the beach and that kinda stuff, I don't know if we can or not. I just, I wanna know.
Well, look at the list I sent you.
Okay.
And get really creative.
Okay.
Try to stick it in one of those categories.
Okay, as far as everything else goes, they're gonna do all this stuff to make for the aquifer. If they wanna sit there and make it, like we were talking about, the people that have the houses there now. We have more worries about their sewage going out there than you do the new ones, cause it'll be done up. The park, you do have to worry about if they have these nice houses, and they're gonna be putting all kinds of chemicals that could bleed off. I do think that that's a little bit valid. And can we turn around and say that we limit what they can use on their lawns? Or is that not allowed by?
Town board could pass an ordinance banning. Any fertilizer on people's lawns.
That would mean everybody around them could be using stuff already.
Let's see, that's what I'm just.
It could be happening for all we know, I mean, I.
Right.
I hope not.
I mean, well, I mean, was it the moon? Idol, talking about, she the fourth lake, that's hitting the phosphorus level or whatever, and phosphorus, that is just, that's people's lawn chemicals bleeding into the lake, so. I mean, that that's a town board issue, if the town board ever wanted to consider banning true green chem lawn and any homeowner from using any fertilizer on their lawns. That's a town board issue, I'm not opposed to it, but that's not.
Well, is is it something that we could recommend, even if we can't make it a? You can't make it just for everyone around the lake, is what they're saying. If it's, well, that's the question I'm asking, I don't know. Mary, Mary, is that if it's a defined housing development like that, is that something that environmental rules might be able to be considered?
I would say if that's gonna be then everybody across the lake.
I'm gonna say the same thing to you, look at the criteria and see if you can stick it in one of the criteria I said.
And then once they do it, it will make it a blanket for everyone around the water.
All, just all property.
I think you just have to look at the rules and regulations that are set for us. And we have to follow those, if it's anything outside that, well, like Mary said, if you can fit it in. We can ask the questions or whatever, but just remember that. There's stuff we have to follow, we can't just make up. You mean, if it doesn't fit in there, we're not gonna be able to do it.
I agree.
So like, put in the email, you wanna say whatever that criteria is because, and then you have to be able to justify that because.
So Mary, are you looking for suggestions? In an email from the planning board member, or is this all gonna be in a conversation at the February meeting?
I need you all to have that conversation in the meeting, on the public record.
On record.
If there's something like Francis wants to include, but he can't be present, can one of us read?
Yes, of course.
I knew Tony would get it. I remember everything should be on the record and questions be, what fits the criteria, I mean, you know.
I mean, just, just so you know, I am saying that if this were ever to go in front of a court.
Right.
We submit, it's called a record. And we submit everything, we submit all the minutes, we submit, sometimes people get transcripts and we'll submit those transcripts. So the court can look at that entire record that we submit. To say you guys made your decision correctly or not correctly, and that's actually not the standard, but that's the easiest way to explain it. But you can't have an arbitrary capricious reason for making your decision.
If there is an arbitrary capricious. Gations.
Yeah.
And this ends up going to court.
It can be disallowed.
And the town prevails. Is that just money fizzles away from all the taxpayers to cover that cost, or does the town recoup that from the person that brought litigation?
No, you can't do that in an article seventy-eight.
And Mary, um. You can express what I wanna say. These public comments, everybody's concerns, even though. The paperwork may be saying the opposite, that the aquifer is fun and everything is good. How do we balance the two? You know, where do we?
So.
Come in others.
Ben picked by the town board to be the decision-making body.
Okay, so it's purely.
But you have to have a rational basis for making the determination that you make. So if you're looking at. The reports. You need to. Actually look at them and make a decision. And it can't be arbitrary, it can't be capricious, you have to have some basis in fact for believing the way that you believe.
Legally.
Well, so everything I'm saying to you is if it's challenged and you want your decision to be upheld, I don't care, but the court goes with your decision, then ignore everything.
And you're just covering your base.
I mean, I just, it's, we just had a. Um, someone brought an article seventy-eight against the ZDA. And the court upheld their decision because they went through each of the criteria and put their reasons on the record, and the court isn't supposed to overturn their reasons. That's why you're picked, you know this area, you know. How the criteria should be met, and the court can't substitute their judgment for your judgment as this board.
So, here's a process question. Those seven planning board members, and say if out of fifteen topics that might apply to. For, again, I know it's not that black and white, and if amongst ourselves. Do you recommend that we take an informal survey amongst all seven of us uh, for each item, or? Is it sort of like a, like a block rant, it's all together at the same time?
My suggestion would be when you're ready to make a determination, that. The board goes to the criteria, someone walks you through the criteria, um, and then. If you feel strongly about that criteria, then I think you should give your opinion on the record and say why. Um, but I, that all needs to be done at a meeting when you're ready to make your decision. And then you're gonna vote, someone's gonna make a motion to approve or deny. And based on what you've said prior to that vote, that's what it's gonna stand on.
And we don't all have to vote the same way, majority.
And if next month, we close the public hearing, we don't by any means need to come to the final decision. So no need to feel rushed in this.
Ju- just as an example, of a previous thing which I was part of, the uh, ATT. Tower. We had rules and regulations in the book, I printed them all out, we gave everybody a copy, went through each one. I kind of did it myself, cause I was, I think I was the chairman. And made up the rules, which I thought were pertaining exactly answered each question. The lawyer either yes or no, and we had to make some adjustments, but then after that. We, well, we happened to approve it that day, but you know. It could have been disapproved if something was wrong, but that's, I did it right by the book so that.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that either decision can be challenged. You have to prove it, it can be challenged, if you deny it, it can be challenged, so it's just really important.
Party's gonna do it.
It's just really important to put your reasons on the record.
Now, Mary, if I'm an alternate, I can't. Can I ask any questions or not?
Yep. Okay, cause you may have to make that, you may be that person making that decision, okay?
The vote, if she's not on the, of the seven, then she can't vote.
But she could still ask a question.
Of course, yes, you you should. You should be just as informed as the rest of them.
Okay.
Can I say for the record that we have a very good school district, regardless of what the first woman commented on? That was painful comment.
That was, really, seriously.
We have a great school, we should be proud of it. I moved my family to this area. Schools in consideration. Yeah, married by a school.
But they have the right to make any comment as public. And make a motion to close the book. Where's the closing?